I think you're on.
All right. Well, we will get started. This is the Tuesday, August 2nd, meeting of the Select Board. With me, I have Vice Chair Craig Schultz, Clerk Ellen Rosenfeld, Town Administrator Mike Gazinski, and we have a short agenda for tonight. We're going to do just a few items for agreements and contracts, and then we're going to delve into a working session for our proposed sewer policy. So with that, the first thing we have on our agenda is to review and approve a one-day special alcohol license for Bogastow fishing game.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a one-day all alcohol beverage license for Bogastow fishing game, Bogastow fishing game for August 21st, 2022. 12 to 5:00 is the time of the event.
Okay, excellent.
Second?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the one-day special alcohol license for August 21st, 2022, from 12 to 5:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Can you just sign one of those right now?
Yeah, we have one more, though.
Okay.
This one is also for a one-day alcohol license for Bogastow fishing game for September 17th, 2022, from 12 to 9:00 p.m.
I'll make a motion that we approve a one-day, I didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion we approve the one-day all alcohol license for Bogastow fishing game for September 17th, 2022, from noon until 9:00 p.m.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the other one-day special alcohol license for September 17th, from 12 to 9:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I see you can't sign it.
Okay. Next, we have a couple items from Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, Robert Weiss, Economic Development Director and Planning Director. Tonight, I'm asking this board to sign a contract with Beta Group for our Complete Streets Consulting for the Tier Two level of our Complete Streets program. Cost of the contract is $37,999.82, which is completely underwritten by a grant from the State's Department of Transportation, which this board signed earlier this year. Basically, what will happen in Tier Two, Tier One, of course, was the policy that we signed or that the board signed for Complete Streets in the spring. And this section of the process will involve creating a steering committee that will do some outreach to the town and create a plan of prioritized sidewalk projects, usually about 30 to 35 projects. And that will become a list that we will submit to the state for construction funding. And at that point, hopefully, the state will fund probably four or five of those projects in tune of about $400,000. But that's Tier Three, so this is Tier Two. So that's what we are asking.
Excellent.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, and this is what leads to eventually the $400,000 item, correct?
Yes, this creates the list of projects that we want in the town, and probably four or five top projects will fill up the $400,000 grant that the DOT will give us.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with the Beta Group for the Complete Street project for $37,999.82.
If I may, if the town administrator doesn't sign it, the board will sign it.
I'll make a motion that we sign, that we approve this contract.
Yes.
Okay.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract for the Complete Streets policy agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Robert Weiss, Energy Manager. And as you are probably aware, every year, the town signs a contract with, usually with Globo Montello, through the consortium made up by the Norfolk County folks. Our contract for last year ends August 31st, so it's the end of this month. We're paying, right now, we're paying $2.14 for diesel, $2.13 for gas. What we're asking this year is to authorize the town administrator to sign the proper contract. Usually, we give the town administrator a certain percentage or window to sign it by, but because the board won't be meeting in time to authorize the, to authorize the town administrator based on the prices, we're asking the board just to give the authority to the town administrator to use his best discretion in this matter.
Okay, any questions?
How long, the contracts are one-year?
One-year, yes.
Is it 213 now? We've been paying that.
[laughing]
It won't be. Okay. What is the walkaway on it if, like, middle of the year, if prices come down or something?
That remains to be seen, because Norfolk is going to be negotiating with, well, they will put out a bid, see who bids on it.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what they're going to put in there in terms of that, but we know with the volatile prices, there's going to have to be something in there.
Right, right. Because they could go up more, they could go down considerably, and it's a tough call.
Right. And both parties will probably want to be able to renegotiate it, depending on which way it goes.
So as long as we have his discretion in there, I'm just looking, yeah, okay. So I'll make, I guess the motion's right here at the bottom. I make a motion to authorize the town administrator or his alternate, no, the town administrator, to approve a one-year contract to purchase gasoline through Norfolk County Consortium, if using his best judgment, it's in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the town administrator to use his best judgment to approve a gas and diesel contract with Norfolk County. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the event of the evening, which is discussing the sewer policy. What you guys have in front of you is something I had initially put together, stealing from, I'm not even sure which town I stole from now.
I think it might have been Bellingham, I'm not sure.
It might have been, I think it started with a B, maybe Bellingham. And then Craig also had a document, and Ellen had some feedback as well, and I took everything that came from that meeting and massaged it into this. Couple things to note, I looked at the town of Franklin's that was sent around after one of you went to the Charles River Pollution Control District. So I noticed in there that they had all these tables of fees, like, for water and sewer. And I thought to myself, shouldn't we maybe have that? So I threw that in here, but I'm not, and I tried to indicate where there's a Millis fee, so the other ones are just things that we don't even do.
No.
Or that just Franklin has fees for. So I wasn't sure exactly how to move forward with these things. I figured maybe we could get Jim McKay to weigh in on them. But my main goal was something for sewer, but I suppose including the water makes sense. So I just wanted you to know that's why that's in there. And then the last thing on this document was about the advisory committee that we had briefly discussed, but I'm sure that can use some tweaks. So I figured maybe we can go through this. If you already have thoughts you want to throw out there, and then we can make some more edits.
Well, I've looked it over at the office, I printed up what I had on the other one, and unfortunately, I didn't bring my marked-up copy with me. But I've looked it over, it's all coming back to me now. I think that I had the reserve capacity fee, I didn't have an amount established, but I think it's going to be between $50 and $100. So we can put that as a placeholder if our esteemed Mr. Kollerman says we can charge a reserve capacity fee. Yeah, for those, is that a legal item that we can do?
So you can charge a fee for anything where there's a cost. Can I do that?
[laughing]
You already did.
We'll find out.
I don't think anyone's.
Someone might run down from the cable room.
Yeah, all right.
We're back. You can move over to the other chair if you want to.
Right, I suppose I could do that. Fees, I mean, there are certain kinds of other fees that are just kind of out there, that are, you can find them in statute, but fees generally that exist outside some kind of specific prescription in a statute are going to be, have to have some rough proportionality, it doesn't have to be exact, to some administrative expense. Now, that could be just tracking capacity. You know, we charge fees that, because we've got staff that has to keep an eye on these things and keep records, we've got fees because there's technical responsibility for analyzing the actual capacity and processing the application.
Can I stop you for just a moment? The fee would be based on the fact that we have 45,000 gallons of unused capacity that we have set aside for these homes to use when they do connect. So we are paying for that capacity that nobody's, that's reserved for them, that they're not using at this moment. So is that my justification for it?
Yeah, no, I mean, on those grounds, if that's, if that's capacity that would otherwise be generating other fees, then there's some, then there's some proportionality to that.
Okay.
So that's good. All right.
Is there any, so in here, we were saying potentially that if we had capacity and could allocate it towards something, that there'd be stipulations in place for the type of project that we'd approve that for. Can we say something like, it has to have a minimum of 75% affordable units?
So let's take that specific example aside. First of all, I'm not sure that's an awesome example. I think that because there's virtually no projects, except that are completely public or nonprofit projects that'll have that level of affordable, there may be, say, cooperative 40B projects that will have more than the 25% minimum, but unlikely there. But leaving that specific example aside, the one thing where I think we can and should go further in this document is stating exactly what we're reserving capacity for, and stating the reason why we're doing it. So, and the reason I say that is, A, it just is good sense, and it helps, because it's predictable to potential users of that capacity. The second is that there's a line of cases surrounding the one area where people could poach your capacity, and that is Chapter 40B. And the thin line of cases state that if you have, and I'm going through this in another community now, that has a capacity allocation policy implemented because DEP told them to do so, but it's effective because we have a 40B project that is saying, hey, we're 40B, we can waive all your other requirements, so give us whatever you have left for capacity, which would have been 100% of what they had left. They, this town had a policy, again, required by DEP that said, well, we've got some problem environmental areas near a river that, where the septic systems are toast, and we cannot afford that wastewater going into that watershed anymore. So those are Priority One. And we have an economic development area that is certified and part of our production plan and our master plan, where we're trying to encourage development for economic development in our corridor, and we have to reserve capacity for that, or we do not get the bank for our budget, get the services we need. When you do that, the cases say that you have a justification, and there aren't many justifications in the 40B world to say no, or to say, yes, but only so many gallons, or only so many units. That's really important.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, you can have some first come, first served things, but zoning will be your main control. When you don't have control through other discretionary permits, then you want to have a really strong policy. And again, that policy isn't just a hollow device to stop a bad 40B, it's actually good policy, because you are solving an environmental problem, you're facilitating development where you want to. So there's some hints of that here, but I think you all have to just come right out and say, say it loudly and emphatically where you want that capacity to go, and the reason why you want it to go.
As an example of that, would it be, would an example of that, and I'm not putting that, this might be what I put out, but not this moment, it's a hypothetical, that we'd like to reserve it for town center housing development in the, however we define the town center. So that, okay. And I agree, the 75% seems high. I'd like to set it at 25%, just a typical, that it has to be 25% affordable.
Well, here's the question, though.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to bring this up. So what Jay says about an area that can't handle septic, I think there's somewhere in here that says where...
You did, there is.
Yeah, where it would be detrimental, that you can't, you'd need to hook up. So that would be Priority One, which we would just probably need to outline better.
How many gallons that is?
Where it is.
Where it is.
Where.
How much impact that would have on it.
Where it is.
I don't know where that is.
There's a graft in case where they, their policy identified a very specific area of town.
Okay.
Near the, like, the Blackstone watershed, that has, had been dying for water and sewer forever, because their wells and their septic systems were failing, and potentially reducing a release in pollutants into the, in the river. So they, it was specific, and this one project was going to deprive them of that capacity, or the town's ability to service that area. And that was the kind of public health safety thing that kind of trumps.
Okay. So Priority One could be an area, identified area of environmental sensitivity, just work on that. Priority Two could be high-density projects in the center of town. Priority, however we define that. Priority Three could be, and a requirement would be 25% affordable.
For residential, right.
Residential affordable, yeah.
There's going to be some non-residential projects.
Right.
Will need a little less capacity, but you still want to make sure that, that if they're water, or sewer users, that they have...
I mean, honestly, where we sit right now, I don't expect anything to happen, because we are not doing so great in the capacity department.
Right.
So I wouldn't expect that one day, we're just going to be like, oh, oh, we've got all this capacity, great, you're going to do 25%, you know, affordable, awesome, we'll just approve you right now. I think everything moving forward is going to have to be...
I think it's going to have to go through this, but the other part is when those houses, Orchard Street, for example, if those are removed from the buy right connection, it's going to remove a couple hundred homes from the calculation.
So let's talk about that next.
Which would probably drop us by 10%.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least, probably.
So let's, let's do that next, then. The people where developers paid, the betterment, the developers put in the hookups, these people have not paid a betterment. Can we...
But the sewer runs across.
But it runs there.
So I saw that in there.
Can we take that away?
You can't, I don't think that absent, I'd have to think whether or not we can do it as a bylaw or regulation, but I don't think so. I think people have the right to that connection subject to capacity, subject...
Subject to capacity.
Subject to your capacity allocation.
But do we have to hold capacity for them?
No.
No, that's fair.
No, no, no. They would have the right to connect just like any other homeowner. Maybe priority number one above everything else.
Because it's there.
Is a current existing home with a failed septic system. You know, maybe that's our priority number one.
Yes.
That can be, sure.
And then, so we remove them from our capacity list.
But you can't say no, per se, just...
As long as we have capacity.
As long as there was capacity that was not otherwise allocated.
Right. The minute we hit 100% capacity, if you're on Orchard Road and wanted to connect, we have no more capacity, nobody's connecting.
Those types of connections are...
These, these houses that happen to get lucky, we think they're lucky, maybe they don't, because somebody paid to put sewer by them, my understanding is, they have no more benefit than anybody else in town to hook up.
They do have more benefit, because...
I mean, more rights, let's say more rights.
Right. A user, or potential user that's on a road that doesn't have the sewer in it, would have to do an extension.
Yes.
No one ever has a right to do that. That's at the discretion of the Select Board.
No, I understand, but my point being, they have, the fact that we have been holding capacity for these people, I've never understood it.
I don't know.
Well, this is a relatively new thing.
I don't know that you have or haven't, Ellen, but I think...
But are we holding capacity for them right now?
We are now, but this will be happening.
We are now, but that's the question, is that, do we...
Really?
Do we not have to hold capacity for people unless they have a betterment?
Well, again, unless Charles River is, there's something in the agreement where Charles River, that for the non-bettered folks that have sewer in their street, you have to count that capacity.
They didn't seem to indicate that.
These people have no buy right connection, like, these people don't have a buy right connection, like the people who have the betterment paid. They...
They have a buy right connection, but they don't have capacity. They don't have the turn to switch on it.
As long as, as long as there's capacity, they have the right to connect.
That's different than the bettered folks.
Yes.
The bettered folks were promising you forever and all eternity, we've counted you towards our capacity, you can always connect.
They, they paid for it.
So what do we, so what do we have to wait, do we have to wait for some, somebody else, some other divine intervention to tell us that we can remove these people?
Well, do we have to, do, do we have to...
Do we have to notify them?
Do we have to and/or should we, give, in this policy, give them a set amount of time to hook up else?
No, we can, we want you to give them the impression that they're...
Yeah.
Entitled to anything.
I would say, good news, you don't have to pay the reserve connection fee, and you can connect, right now, we have capacity. 10 years from now, we may not. And that's...
Again, I'm not sure how much capacity you're going to reserve for other users either, so...
Well, we're going to reserve at 100 whatever gallons per bedroom, and whatever required to reserve at.
You all can use whatever your remaining capacity is for the projects you want to use.
Right. And when we run out of capacity, if they haven't connected by then, even though there's a sewer main outside their house.
Then we're in Ellen's divine intervention, because she's a big believer.
So on page three of this document, we can take off all of number two under residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Have we, Aaron, Chair, have we finished with the betterment people yet? Because I have a couple comments.
No, I keep going.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I know that Craig is, likes that $50 fee.
Yeah.
Thing, a year.
A fee, yeah.
A year, a yearly fee.
Yep.
I don't like that.
Okay, why?
Well, for the same reason that everybody got upset with the other last thing. It seems to me to be a penalty, some sort of a tax. For what? They paid, the betterment, they already paid, I don't even know what they paid, but what, did anybody know?
Twenty grand or something.
Was it 20 grand?
Yeah.
Anybody know over what period, 20 or 30 years? Anybody?
20 or 30 years. It was a long term.
Either one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
They paid. There was never anything at the time that said, you got 10, 20, 30, 50 years to do. We come up now, and we say, we're going to charge you $50 a year. I don't know how many there are, because Jim McKay hasn't gotten the updated list.
Yeah.
It's due like any moment. I think there's like 300, 320, does that sound right?
Less, but yeah, around there.
I don't think $50 times 320 is going to allow Millis to build a new senior center. But I do think that that $50 hurts each individual person.
It does. And the argument behind it is that, right now, because they have capacity reserved for them, that we can't let anybody else use, those of us that are on the sewer are paying extra. So it wouldn't build a senior center, but it would theoretically, and I don't know how much the right number is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what we have to look at, to see what the right number is. But it would drive down the cost for everybody else who's on the system who has connected. By how much? I don't know. That's why I need that number from Jim also. You're absolutely right. If it's 100 people at $50, I don't care. It's not going to drive it down enough.
I would agree that, if I may, I mean, I would agree that the amount generated is not going to make a huge difference from this, but in the conversations I remember, as was stated, I think that the reserved capacity that the town has has to be paid for. The current users are paying for the people that have that reserve but aren't yet on. So I wouldn't see this as a fine, or more of a fee, to cover the cost of holding that reserved capacity. So I wouldn't look at it as a fine, I'd look at it as a fee. I mean, certainly could debate the number, if the number is more than what's reasonable. So it's basically trying to take the burden of holding this reserved capacity off the current users and putting on the people for which the capacity is being held.
Right. And the idea behind it would be, they do have the right, absolute forever right, to connect to the sewer, so they exercise that for reserve capacity fee goes away. So it's something that may move a few people to connect, which is part of our goal.
I mean, technically, they're paying for the gallons they won't actually use if they actually connect it, you know, in a way, because their actual usage as counted on our capacity would be less than we're currently counting.
Right. And we're not even talking about the actual process. There's a certain amount that's set aside just to reserve the space.
That's right. But it's, yeah, it's set aside at a gallonage that's more than their actual usage would be.
What about, what about this, what about this? Is it legal, first of all, is it okay to give the betterment people a time limit, a time, 10 years?
Oh, no, 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 we don't want to do that.
That's what we tried last time.
Why? Because your time is so getting...
[laughing] I would rather, I'm trying, I'm trying to character approach this time.
But no, but no fineage in between. What about 20 years?
Well, we had 15, right?
We had 15, and we moved it to 25.
But no, but no, but no...
We weren't fining.
Yeah, we were.
No, there was no fine.
There was just the connection, the regular connection fee.
It was just the regular connection fee.
So we were telling people...
But no, but they had to do it within, like, wasn't it 18 months or something?
No.
Oh, no, no.
It was 15 years, we moved it to 25, and they were still up in arms, so we said, screw it. So...
So we took it off the table completely.
So I would like to go two approaches. I, let's put aside the fine, the reserved capacity for just a moment. I would like to couple it with, and this is on the page, whatever, they're outnumbered, so I'm guessing four.
Sorry.
But, okay.
I'm not that sophisticated.
But I'd like to set a bifurcated rate. I'd like to say new, existing homes that are, existing homes that are out there, $1,000 connection fee. New construction, leave it where it is, basically. And that would encourage people to connect.
Not just betterment people, everybody? Or just betterment people?
I could think about it both ways.
Well, I mean, bearing in mind, if it's for the purposes of connection, and it's covering the administrative costs around connection, having two different rates, unless there was a different cost of connection.
I'm going to, I'm going, I'm going to say that anybody who wants to connect to the sewer, it might encourage some of those on Orchard to come in and connect also, but new construction, so I put in a subdivision, is paying the higher rate. And I know that Franklin, or one of the towns I looked at, had a bifurcated rate. They did have it set out.
I think that's fine, because there's a differentiation in the review and the approval of all that stuff, with the existing infrastructure in there. And when you say $1,000, that's, that's the fee or the entire, I mean, that seems like a bargain, right?
That's just the connection fee. They're still going to have to get a contractor to connect.
Right now, it's $4,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the fee to the town.
But still, show is a reduction from what...
The normal fee is like just over $4,000.
And then, then you add in their actual, from the street to their house.
And then whatever, yeah, exactly.
So that would give people a strong incentive to avoid, first off, the $50 a year fee, if that's an issue for people. And then, the $1,000 connection fee now, which is down from $4,000, you know, if I spend $1,000, I save $50 a year. Is it worth it to me?
I mean, I'm personally not married to the $50 thing.
No, I need to see the numbers, and without having an actual number to multiply it by.
Okay. What about one other thing? What about, I think we talked about this, what about putting, I don't think there are that many betterment people, something on their deed, that when they convey, they have to hook up.
So, right now, what's in place with the Board of Health is if your septic fails, or if you go to sell and you fail Title V.
Right.
Then you, and you have that, hook up, you have to connect.
Okay.
So at least...
This would be more than that. So we at least have that.
We have at least that now.
Yeah, mine would be more than that.
What would you want now?
No matter what. If you, if you pass.
Oh, if you sell. Oh.
If you sell.
If the deed is transferred to anyone.
Anyone.
Then you have to...
Doesn't matter.
So they really didn't like that before either. I know we're not going to make everybody happy, but people said, well, why should I have to take this hit when I sell my house? So...
Especially the Orchard Street folks, where they're saying it's going to be a $30,000 hit when they sell their house.
Yeah, they're right.
You know?
Okay.
And I put a septic in four years ago. Why do I have to do that? And, and I put a septic in four years ago, why, why do I have to do that? And then, well, 25 years.
Which is why then Craig tacked on, when we were thinking about that, because we had contemplated that previously, it's like, okay, but if you did a septic system in the last five years, you get an extra 10 years, you know, so...
Okay.
I think it's just cleaner, I don't disagree with you, I'd like to try to get this resolved, but I think that if you set the price right...
Someone will come up, it will chill a sale, yeah, for sure.
I think if you get the price set correctly for the hookup, the people on Close Road, where they've had it for 20-plus years, and the betterment's paid off.
What about, like, what about, there's other fees than this $4,000, isn't there? Is that the only one?
Only to the contractor that does the work.
And it's just the four?
For the town, then the contractor charges whatever he charges.
Okay, got it.
411 Union Street, I don't know if this can be done, I don't know, what about a tax, like a, a discount off people's water and sewer bill, if they, is that any kind of an incentive for them to hook up, or, yeah, next month's bill will be a little bit cheaper to hook, here's an incentive to hook up, I don't know if that's been thought of, or can be done, but that might be incentive, you know, someone gets their water and sewer bill, say it's one price, well, if you hook up, next month you'll get X, Y, and Z off your water bill, or sewer bill, or whatever, hook, or hooking up, some kind of incentive to make people want to hook up, I think a lot of times, there is an incentive out there, and people just don't think of it, but some, maybe break off their bill or something, I don't know.
That's something to think about.
Thank you. I don't know that we're allowed to do discounts on taxes, but I think we can do the hookup fee, you know, I, I think that's where it's addressed.
That's, that's, we at least know that part's in our control, I don't know about if the rate thing would be a problem.
And, and I'd need that final number from Jim, what's remove Orchard Street and the other ones that haven't paid the betterment, what are we looking at? What's our true reserve capacity at that point? You take the $1,000 hookup fee, does that incentivize, you know, if there's 100 people on the list, does that get 15 to connect, because now it's $3,000 cheaper to connect?
A limited time deal.
I wasn't gonna do a sale, but this board's predisposed to 1,000, who knows, but, you know, but, yeah.
These fees are subject to change.
Yeah, so, so it might incentivize a few people, but, just going through my random notes now.
You know, the other thing, you know, we, we see this around septic, I'm not saying that it's something we do, there are programs, like there's the, the program, the loan fund for, that, that the state runs for, for septic repair, it could be a similar model, where there's kind of like a, figure out some kind of loan interest, you know, there's, I don't know if there's anything in this area available with, with state funds, but if there was money set aside to help subsidize things at a, at a lower, it gets a little complicated, but you could envision almost a special act that would help lessen the contractor costs a little bit to, to some kind of financing.
And, and that can range wildly, I mean, I was 19 feet off the street, I mean, I, it was, it was nothing for me to connect, stub came out of the house, and I had my kids that were older, they were just brand-new babies at that point, but I could've had them shovel, you know?
Could you imagine my house?
Yeah, I know, but Erin's in a whole different boat, so it's, it's a whole different set of rules in the world, but yeah, so something might work there.
Okay.
The only other question I had that came up, and I, actually, I've got two more points that were on my list, when we were visiting the water treatment, she said some towns charge a fee for developers for INI, you know, just set aside separately.
I think we have $6 a gallon listed on the sample.
It's here.
Is that on your list?
Somewhere, hold on, I put it in here, didn't I?
So essentially, you, there has to be a technical, it's been done, so I'm sure the engineers that Jim uses could do this, you have to do, come up with a rough calculation on what do we have out there where we're losing capacity through, this could be on the water side, or the sewer side, certainly is on the water side, where, where, where problems in the system, we're losing capacity just because of inefficiencies in the system, old pipes, et cetera, et cetera, so there's a, there's a charge to developers to help pay for some of those repairs to the system.
And I think this was a one-time fee equivalent to $6 per gallon of their reserve.
So it gets tacked on to the sewer system entry for like, new, new buildings, new developments put in.
More often see it with water than we do with sewer, because it's water coming in versus sewer going out, and if we're losing capacity coming in, then we, you more often see it there where you want developers to do that, so you're not actually losing that water.
Correct, I, I think that we, I, and we have been very good with our INI studies, so I, I'd like to see an amount considered for, eat both water and sewer, and Jim can give us some recommendations on that.
Yeah, that...
Water, for sure.
Because Franklin doesn't have a water one.
Right, but the wastewater treatment plant was adamant about the sewer INI, because that's where she said we could grab, you know, call 5% more possibly, but I don't think we're that leaky, I think we're pretty tight, because we do, we have been doing a good job with it.
So I'm, I'm a little unsure on how she's, how does that affect the, the amount of capacity?
Well, because if we're sending 5% less there that they meter, then, because they meter what comes in to the, to the wastewater tract, that would drop our used capacity by five, by, call it 5%, I don't think it's that bad, but if it dropped it by 2%, the reserve would still stay the same, it wouldn't impact that at all, but our actual would drop by two, three, four.
So groundwater and, and water from drainage pipes is seeping into the septic, sewer pipes getting into the system, yes, leakage in, so we're trying to keep outside water from getting into our sewer pipes, right?
And, and the way they did it, because Jim explained this, they have something that goes through it at midnight, until, when you're not using your bathrooms, and they just look for water coming in with this little crawler machine, and they find it's got a dehumidifier up down to your sewer too.
Okay, so the INI, and then, what else did you have, Craig?
Oh, and just, I don't know if we can put it in as a, as a request, as a comment, as a requirement, but just encourage the use of packaged treatment plants, but that's a much more detailed conversation, I think, and that might not be something we want to build into the policy, but, but note that we're interested in.
So the third, from the first page, 1-2, third section down, wastewater connections.
Yep.
All new construction, including commercial, industrial, and residential, and construction and developments, shall be required to implement an appropriate septic system or packaged treatment plant.
Where feasible, the only thing that I had there, because the downtown is not going to be able to do that.
Okay, where, where feasible, but, other than that, whether it's feasible or not, it's gonna depend on, you know, the criteria that we just talked about, and if there's any capacity.
Yeah, and the criteria that I was working at, that I think, I was hearing was, existing homes with failed septic, it's, we reserve for, those people have the right to connect first when they come before us.
Yep.
Identifier is environmental sensitivity, those people are 1A, 1B, you know, they're, they're right up there too, reserve capacity for those homes, and then the last one was high-density areas in the town center that are 25% affordable, was like our third requirement, or third priority, or second priority if you have 1A and 1B, you know?
Yeah, and if we can't identify a 1A, then we can just have 1 and 2.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's always gonna, I think that that's gonna fall into a top priority area, I don't know how much we reserve for it, how much we set aside for it, if they came before us on Orchard Street with a sewer stub in front of their house, and we had the capacity, and they had a failed septic system, they'd have the right to connect.
So what, so the next part underneath the wastewater connection says, provided there's available capacity, certain projects may be considered which meet all of the following criteria, so this would need to be, would we leave it like this, or would I need to also add in that it would have to be the town, part of the economic development of the town center?
Well, I think, I think item 5 would read, you know, the hot, the town center development with a minimum of 25% affordable would be our criteria there, but somebody's gonna come in and say they're not in that area, I guess the other part goes into how you...
Someone's gonna have to define that area.
Yeah, and I'm assuming we can get there, yeah.
That's easy.
I think the rest, I think the other two pieces actually count how we determine our reserve capacity, you know, because if we want to set aside enough for the environmentally sensitive homes that are gonna fail, that comes off the top, even though they don't, and if we want to set aside a certain amount for...
So the, the paragraph under that is what, it says, whenever blah, 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 lack of such conditions would endanger public health, create a public nuisance, or impair water quality. So should that be reworked a little bit to, to say that that's the first priority for specifically homes that are...
I would think somehow we fit that in, but I think some of the other stuff we talked about, the environmentally sensitive area, goes towards how we calculate capacity, reserve capacity, because if there's a neighborhood that we're worried about...
It's, again, doing the, the good thing, but also preventing the bad thing.
Right, so I think we might have to look for those environmentally sensitive areas, and maybe...
I'm, I'm not sure why demonstration of adequate financing is really necessarily...
Does this have to do with subdivisions?
I don't know, I stole it from another town.
Okay, I think this has to do with subdivisions.
It does.
Okay.
Okay, so, we already have, right now, do we not have four permitted subdivisions that we're withholding capacity for? Does anybody know that answer to that?
How many?
I think there are either three, yeah, there, these are three or four in different stages.
They're withholding capacity.
That we are holding capacity for.
They've been ran in capacity.
There's an Ellen, and there's a, yeah.
So we're not, those are good, right?
Yep, they're done.
We're not...
They're through.
Okay, we're not gonna keep reviewing them to make sure they haven't fallen apart, or, okay, so this is for the new ones beyond that.
This is moving forward.
Right, so that's why you have, demonstrate evidence of adequate financing, because it's like, are they viable? Why should we withhold, but, but you only are doing that once they're approved, right?
Yeah.
I, I would make that, I'm not sure why that's a, a priority, I can see it as a requirement for someone coming in and requesting the capacity as part of your application process, but...
Right.
So dumb it down for me here, I'm taking off number one.
I think this paragraph needs to start off by saying, new subdivisions shall...
Right, new projects.
New projects, new projects, not just empty homes.
Yeah.
That, that simplifies it a lot.
Yeah, it could be a, an industrial project.
Right, new projects.
And I, I think 1 and 2 are application materials, not priorities.
Right, you don't need them.
Those are things that they would demonstrate as part of their application or request.
So 1 and 2, I'm gonna strike them.
Right.
Have primary project review planning board demonstrate that, based on state and local regulations.
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna go into strengthening those other things in here, when, when we start talking about the affordable housing and master planning.
Right, and then, and then number 5 is the town center 25% affordable, and I'd have one other question that came up that I didn't have written down, that I just recalled, I'd like to put a time limit on how long they get that permit for, so we're not holding it for perpetuity, so I don't know, I don't know if that, that's noted somewhere.
Did that come up during some of that realizations?
It's in here somewhere.
You're talking about projects again.
Projects.
It's two years.
Well, typically, the planning board puts a time limit, I think it's usually two years.
Depends on the, on the...
Well, I think on, I think on, yeah, it's on that page, top of page three, I think.
1, 2, third page, yep, on the very top.
Right.
During two years.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that would be...
That's a preliminary allocation, but then after the preliminary, preliminary allocation, if, if the project goes fallow, then I, I think that there's some interest in still having these allocations, a final allocation, being of finite duration.
Right.
You don't want it tied up in a failed project.
Right, and how long does, how long does the planning commission give you to do your projects?
Well, it depends, so a special permit's gonna be two years, or it can be three years, on the, based on the changes in the statute, a subdivision doesn't, isn't tied to that, but a, a good planning board is going to state that you're building with, by a certain period of time, they will have a sunset clause.
I have no idea what a reasonable amount of time is for developer to do a subdivision, and I don't even mind if there's interim steps, if it's a large project, like 1 Ellen.
Right, it depends on how many phases.
Yeah.
So maybe best not to put...
Yeah, I don't know if you want to interfere too much with the planning.
Unless you, unless you just put something more basic in there and says, the, the, the town may impose a, a time limit for, for completing the connection, and after such time, the allocation may be revoked.
If, if the planning board revokes, or, you know, then ours expires as well, and they have to come before us.
But I, rather than just saying the planning, because the planning board process is gonna have its own penalties, I think you all should control this arm of it, and that if you're not satisfied that they have stepped up, then I want to give you all some enforcement authority.
So we could call them in after five years and say, you haven't broken ground yet.
Well, what's going on here? We'll give you an extension if you can demonstrate some kind of people hardship or something. That's no different than when someone comes into a planning board and says, because the planning board has called them and said, hey, you know, this thing hasn't done anything, and they come in for an extension, well, show us why you need it, are you just being lazy, or is your economics falling in apart, is the market terrible, did you hit ledge, you know, whatever it may be.
Okay, so having that flexibility is good.
Yeah, rather than trying to say what the appropriate amount of time, give, give yourselves the authority to set on a case-by-case basis, a reasonable sunset clause.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ellen, do you have anything else specific, because I have good questions for you guys, if you know, okay, what are your thoughts on the appointed committee?
I think that with a clear scope of work, and that'll be a second meeting, you know, then we, then I, I, since I proposed it, I kind of do like it, but I think it has to have a clear scope of work, I love, and these are the basic outlines, you know, storm water appeals, they recommend the rates, and I really don't foresee many situations where we would go counter to the rates that they, Jim, and the consultants come up with, but I do want to reserve the right to review them, because I'm adamant that stormwater should be looked at as a different rate structure, and recommend the projects that we should proceed with, recommend sewer connections, pursue water, we spread the guidelines, they review the guidelines, see if the project falls into it.
So I guess what my question is, is for the purposes of set, of trying to continue to draft this policy, how much more specific do we want to be in this particular document?
I don't think these go into the policy, I don't, I think this committee would be something separate than the policy.
Okay.
And so we have time to discuss it and think it over a little bit more, I think the goal is to make it much, I think the Economic Development Committee had a good intention behind it, I think that this formalizes it much, much more.
You mean the enterprise?
Enterprise, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I, I get, if it starts with E, I'm getting confused now, it's been a long day. The enterprise committee, which I was on...
But just any, that's the only one, that's your, your...
I can't get capital, but anyway, the, I, I think it had good intentions, I think there was some good work done by them, I think it, I think that it needs to be very formal, though, and I think good chart of work, a good scope of work, and a, a small enough committee to actually do it with some real, real authority to do some things, and, and formal recommendations with a formal chart of work would define it well.
All right, so, so having, having said all that, hold on, so having said all that, next steps, I can go back and tweak this again, so I can edit the document based on our conversation, we will need to probably hear what Jim has to say about the rate tables.
Yep.
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need this obtaining a preliminary allocation? Do we need all that verbiage?
So, I don't know, I stole it, I just, I want something, I, I desperately want a sewer policy in place.
Yes.
And it's, the town I had looked at, and I'm gonna have to go back and figure out who it was now, had like, a 60-page document.
Oh my God.
And I was thinking, well, maybe that's what we're supposed to have, but I'm not about to make a 60-page sewer policy right now, so I was just trying to isolate the pieces So, I was just trying to isolate the pieces that I thought were applicable to us. If we don't think that part's applicable to us, then I'm happy to take it out when I tweak this document.
Can.
What do you think about it?
I, I, I thought there was a lot in here. I thought it seemed a little heavy.
It is heavy.
And I think that, I don't know that we need a preliminary and, I mean, when I was writing in my head, and I did it work a little bit when I did my outline, I think we have to come up with how do we define our reserve capacity? And that's where we talk about removing the houses that haven't paid a betterment. We, we reserve for the envi, I'll put that in now, tonight. Reserve for the environmentally sensitive areas. Then we, then the next one is new subdivisions that get to connect. What are the priorities? I think we've hammered those around a little bit. Then the third one is existing homes that need to connect, and I think we've discussed that, you know, that, that those with a betterment are by right, those without a betterment apply, but they go to the, you know, they're, they're right there near the top of the list because if they've got a sewer in front of their house, they're there, as long as there's capacity. And then the last bit was the, the rate tables. I did like seeing the rate tables. I thought those were a good piece to include in it.
But the policy we have in place right now, do we have a policy?
No.
Okay.
So, so do we, do we, being a lawyer.
Because I would have, I would have started there. God help me.
But we don't have anything that tells you when an applicant comes and they, an application fee is due? I mean, does that?
Oh.
Do we have that written?
I don't know what document or how that's put together. I mean, there's, there's current fees.
Right.
So, there's something.
There's something.
But there's not a policy about who and what and when can connect.
Right, there's a chart of fees, but it doesn't go into the verbiage on exactly how this, no, I don't believe so.
Right.
Do we, do we.
Do we need it?
Do we need, yeah, well, I think we need a policy, but do we need this preliminary allocation versus just allocation?
Just come on up, but, yeah.
Yeah.
You know what, if, if this is Bellingham, it.
I think it's Barnstable, actually.
Okay. So, Barnstable's huge.
Huge, yeah.
We're not doing preliminary.
And probably more, they probably have a higher degree of need for this.
I was actually in communication with the Norfolk Town Manager. I'm waiting for some documents because I was going to look there because I know Norfolk doesn't have, has one sewer thing in the middle of town, but other than that, you guys are going to have to work off septic and packaged treatment plants. So, that's what I was hoping to see what was there so that I could then pilfer from them.
Well, for as long as I have a handed policy, we will not have a sewer system in that. I think Norfolk is already open to deal with this. But, yeah, so the reason that Bellingham might be a good place to speak to, they, they've thought about this a lot. I'm sure Jim knows Don DiMartino, who's the DPW director over there. He's very good. Mike certainly knows Dennis Frain over there, who, he and Don are a 1-2 punch over there.
Okay.
Mike, they're roughly similar size, in some respects they're a little bigger, but they have very kind of sewer needs, and how they look at capacity might be a good idea. I like their infrastructure from a staff level on this and how they look at it. So, might be a, a good phone call, similar size. Franklin's a little bigger, might not get a good example from that.
All right.
I think some of the items that are listed in there, I think that can be put into our pol, I mean, I like that item 1 on page 3.
I like the idea of getting a preliminary look.
Yeah.
But maybe you don't need all this process.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, I don't think we've ever gotten, we've got a couple meetings on people, I know that.
Meetings are good, but if you want to formalize a little process, come see us so we can get a feel for it, you know, that's fine.
All right.
Right.
So, let me backtrack for a second. So, I'm going to consider all the things we talked about. I made notes for edits. I'm going to put this down, though, and I'm going to go look at Bellingham, and then maybe I will massage a whole new document, and then we'll come back and do this again.
Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind if you, because I like that, you too, but if you send it in Word, I'd like to just try to.
Yeah, I can share it. It's on the, it's on a thing.
Okay, because, yeah, I saw it on PDF.
Yeah.
Play the PDF.
But like Google does.
Yeah.
See, I only know Google.
That's all I know.
But this is.
And I don't even know that.
It's a similar thing.
This is SharePoint, isn't it?
I just said that I know it.
Sure.
Is it the town?
I can share it, yeah.
Word?